The SBSU board director's meeting for December twenty one. It's six oh seven. Agenda reads as follows, public comments, there is an executive session for negotiating or securing a real estate purchase or lease options. Item three is the finance and operations related. Four is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes warrants. I didn't see these requirements, resignations and nominations. There are two policies we're asked to warn tonight on condom availability and antiflexus. The superintendent's report, chair's report. Other items and the section for your information regarding student enrollment, budget status and two policies on which the most greater ranks were updated.
I think it's.
It's approval, it's item C under three, which is finance. Well, I think it's a place to get it started. Imply then. If the agenda is okay with the rest of the board members? No objection to that, public comments. No public comment. We'll move on to the executive session. We would need a motion to go into executive session for the negotiating or securing of real estate purchase or lease option.
And I'll second it.
Motion for Ray, second from Fran. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We will move to executive session at six oh nine.
I'm gonna create a breakout room.
Okay, for me to say?
Yeah, you got going in there. You gotta say that.
Three administrators in the room.
Stay, you have to vote that.
And our attorney is.
And our attorney.
So we would like a motion to include.
Nick Galt, Renee Gordon, Barb Woodrow, Jim Colkey and David Ruh, your attorney.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion for Fran.
I'm trying to think that we, we didn't have to state certain things about them.
Not for this motion, just straight into execs, into executive session for real estate.
Oh, okay, where did you send?
So we have a motion from Fran, you're second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Posed in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Well, extensions, we are in executive session. And three is finance and operations related. We have a treasurer's report from November twenty twenty one, November thirty. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion from Fran.
Okay.
Second, Leon, is their discussion. Oh. Excuse me, David?
Yes, I was wondering if the board was going to make a motion coming out of executive session.
Yes. It's B, it's B on the finite, number three, B, it's on the.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
We had a motion in a second, I didn't see any discussion, all those in favor.
You got a couple of hands up, well.
Where?
They're not board, they're not SU board members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't invited into the executive session, so that's why I was, I was just, when you guys know I was here.
I don't, I don't have you listed as a member of the SU board. You're not.
What? What board, why, why did I get this email? I don't. What, what, which board meeting is this?
This is the SBSU board meeting, Tori. I didn't.
We're supposed to be part of the public.
Yeah, I, I thought you were here as a member of the public.
All right, my mistake.
You're welcome.
And Matthew has his hand up too.
Matthew?
Matthew? Yeah, I just, I just wanted to be here and was wondering what was going on, because I, there was no information about. I didn't know that you were executive, because there's no indication of that.
We had just come out of the executive session.
I see that now, yeah, thank you, I'm all good.
Are we moving here? Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report. There was no discussion, so all those in favor, shake a five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries treasurer's report is accepted. Item B under three, central office lease agreement.
I'd like to move that we accept the lease agreement as provided in the package. For the future location of the SBSU.
Leon's made a motion, do we have a second? A second from Ray. This was the item from executive session, is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor are accepting the central office lease agreement as provided in the packet, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
There are two opposed, any abstentions? In opposition was Fran and Jackie for the record. It appears the motion carries to approve the central office lease agreement. Item three C is approval of the SBSU fiscal twenty three budget.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the finance committee. To. To accept the. The, the budget at the two point three percent increase for the, of the years. Would the twenty three as indicated in the, in the packet.
Leon has put forward a motion to approve the twenty three budget. At two point three two percent increase, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Scott, discussion. Guess we worked that one out. With no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Hey.
Excuse me?
I'm just curious what the, what the discussion was, I mean, was there any discussion about Ray's proposals?
That's coming up.
Isn't that part of the budget?
No, that's part of the assessment of the budget. We have to have a budget before we can assess.
No, okay, all right, thank you.
Did we get approval? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there opposed? Nay.
No.
There are two in opposition, Jackie and Fran, any abstentions? And as the motion carries. So we have approval of the budget. Is our assessment discussion?
You can do it under finance, I mean, it wasn't. I don't know, where, did you make a motion and add it to the agenda, where, did you name it, the indication?
Not particularly for assessments.
No. So you said something about others.
I've said, from what I took, Vic's position was included.
And the approval for the budget, you mean?
Well, in.
On the finance and operations.
Finance, yes.
It would be a logical.
Right, that's a logical point.
And is the board okay with including that? Under this, under finance?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, I mean, the others, I thought you said others, but.
Well, it can't be other, because there's action.
Okay, yeah, if there's action, we can't vote on anything. If, if the board is okay with this, we'd like to have a discussion regarding assessment that's connected to this budget. Make the approval of the board members' present.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no objection, so. Leave that.
All right, well, I sent all of you on the board. Some, some discussions. A cover letter, the discussion and notes accompanying the discussion that review the assessments that North Vinington has currently. To also discusses the, there, there are two issues, one is I think a relatively small adjustment in what we pay on superintendent's offices services, that's administrative services. And the second is adjusting the allocation method for assessing costs of triple E services to pre-K children. To provide an equal cost per pupil. So. The argument that, I mean, I state the argument pretty, pretty clearly in the cover letter. And for the adjusting the assessment for superintendent services. I'll just read that paragraph and then we can discuss from there. The reason for this request is that as a non-operating district, we don't operate a school, we have no teaching staff. And schools chosen by students provide the services not received from the SBSU in these areas, which I haven't specified, but I will. If, under, in discussion, hence, no services are available there, students without services, there's no cost and there's no oversight, so it follows, there should be no costs from, for that oversight and planning and development. Since all assessments are based on the opportunity to receive and use SU provided services as required. The second element is the adjusting the allocation net. Proposal is adjusting the allocation method for assessing costs of providing triple E services to pre-K children. To a basis that will provide an equal cost per pupil. It's a, and the argument here is that the current method of allocation leads to wide disparity in cost per pupil. And here I am speaking of between SBU, ESD and North Vinington Greater School District. Such disparity is not equitable. And is, this disparity may be removed by a different formula that it bases assessment on the two-year averages of triple E learners only. And I made an extensive argument about this last year and the, the, in the notes to my argument that's attached to the cover letter. Is a review of that, those, that argument from last year. Basically, for instance, I'll show you the most current example. Pointed out, currently, we have one student in triple E four, pre-K four. And we're paying ninety one thousand dollars for that student by assessment. Which is outlandishly outside the normal purview, but last year's difference was the two-year average difference was about fifty five percent higher than SBU, ESD's assessment for the number, same for student, per student. And I argued at that time that I think that's, that's a very high discrepancy. I realize that we're a small district and we have few students in this category and it's a small changes is going to shift balances a bit, but when it's coupled with using a system, which is the system that AOE provides to Renee. Brad James does an average that assesses these based on the total pre-K population, including the triple E students. As opposed to just the triple E students, the total population, because we have a high in, we have a, a large number of people that use the pre-K services. And we have a smaller number of people that whose children need special ed services. Our ratio is different from the SBU, ESD and it ends up giving us a fairly large per pupil cost, which I, I think is obviously a bit inequitable, because the budget is established on basically a services required and the cost of providing those services. And that seems to me that it's more equitable to distribute it on an equal pupil cost. Equal per pupil cost. So. That said, I'm I guess I'm willing to entertain questions or thoughts about this, like, I, as I said, the biggest, the biggest change would be the to me would be the triple E services, because it's been, it's, it's over the two years that performed, that created the assessment for FY twenty-two, that I was just mentioning, the ninety one thousand, which happens to cover one student. We had, we started with a larger number and then last year, the previous year, that would be FY twenty-one. It dropped down and that created a an average of four, which was what we were to be paying on and, but the the overall assessment was created by you lumping all the pre-K students into there. And ultimately, we ended up with a cost of you know, around eighteen thou, eighteen thousand dollars per pupil, like, four pupils and the SBSU assessment was about twelve, so it's about, it's one point five five difference. And that just seems, that's, seems to me to have continued for some time, but I have not done the whole timeline, going back to the institution of this system. And I believe that that's just not equitable, and I believe that those costs should be per pupil should be as close to equal as possible, because there, there really is. The budget does not account for in individual differences, they, the program does deal with individual students and deals with services on an individual basis, I believe. But overall, the costs are, should be allocated basically on equal basis and I, I doubt that there's ninety one thousand dollars worth of cost for this one pupil. There might be, but I, I don't, I don't know, because I don't know the pupil and I don't want to talk about that, that's not the issue, but it seems to me that it's not an appropriate way to do it. And I think if we explored a way of doing it that just deals with the children that are in the triple E part of it, the special ed part of pre-K, then I think we would come up with a better system that would it would definitely roll a little bit, because there will be ups and downs with our numbers and with SBU, ESD's numbers, but I think it might come to be a little bit closer and average over a length, longer length of time to be more or less equal.
That's that argument. For overall, the money to be assessed is not going to be affected, it's the shifting from one district to the next, and I, I think the only other place that we have consideration, pretty much like North Vinington, would be the Sandy Gates situation. Yeah. I, I would guess.
Right.
Along that line. And so the question then before us is that if, if we go and shift to approval. This, I think what Ria is saying, that, that there will be in terms of someday in the future, or that could be a, a blown up number. And it could be dropped, I mean, be a reduced number, I mean, we could, they can have none along that line.
We have had none.
Yeah. And the rationale behind the SBSU entity as a whole. How do we manage the fact that there is one entity or two entities in within the, the district to divide it up by per pupil versus an overall general assessment?
Well, we, we do it by pupil now.
Yeah.
So it's different systems, it's not state law says that it will be done but per pupil, or actually per enrolled pupil. But in, in fact, this is done on a little bit different basis. Because you don't, you know, you're dealing with pre-K students. Basically, and it is these students have special ed needs. They may not by the time they get to kindergarten or just past kindergarten, but they do at this early stage because they're considered developmentally delayed. But unlike, they, they, they don't have individual IEPs, because they're all in one category of developmental delay. They may have specific services, because they need different services. If a hearing impaired child needs different services from a child who's not hearing impaired. But so, what am I saying here? Well, well, the, the thing is that, that in special ed the, where the full categories, twelve different categories are available for categorizing what services a child needs.
Right.
Is, is distributed to districts on the basis of the actual students' needs. This is being distributed on the basis of the program costs that cover service to the actual needs of the children.
Right, and that's what you want to get away from the program.
But, but those, those costs are the cost of running the program as it's structured to try to meet the needs of those children. Which is not an individual assessment. And we're, we're getting far afield here, but the, the question is I believe that we should still base cost distribution on the number of students that, that a district has.
Right.
For us to have no assessment, we would have to have zero students two years in a row. That's the way the two-year average works. We could even change that, because it, it's unlikely that we'd ever not have an assessment. I think, pretty unlikely, especially with you know, I, all, all districts are seeing some increase in needs of children at the early childhood level. But.
So where do the two years come?
My point is not really the, I, I don't want to talk about the particular specifics of the dollars, because that's not the, the issue, the issue is an equity issue, that these children should be the costs should be pretty much equal for all of them, as much as, in as much as we can make it so, given that we're, we have to follow the state rules on you know, we have to find a formula based on the number of pupils that we have there to make this more or less equitable. And the one we have, I don't think is equitable.
If I understand this correctly, it's not going to affect our bottom line on the budget.
No, no.
It's not, it's going to impact your local.
It will, it will impact the lower rate, which makes this a mechanical issue. An operational issue that we can continue to work on, I don't, it doesn't affect the budget we just passed, but.
No, it, it just affects the distribution to the district.
But is this something that we could put on the next agenda? And get into the meter again?
Where does that?
It's going to have to come out in our budget's next.
It's probably too late.
Too late. If you want to put it in. If you want to put a shift in adjust, adjustments, then what, Ray, this is probably the second, if not third budget season that we've talked about doing something and always seem to run out of time. Yeah. Because Renee won't be able to set MAU's budget or the union elementary budget unless she knows what, how you're going to divvy up the assessments, that you're going to shift more to MAU's budget and to.
Well, this, this is, this is strictly an elementary.
All right, so you're going to shift more to the elementary district. That's a decision the board would have, you know, have to make, well.
Oh, the SBU, yes, the.
Yeah, right, I think, I think the issue is to find a formula that's going to maximize equity. Equality in this distribution. And I've, I proposed just using the triple E numbers on the two-year rolling average, as opposed to banking them into the total P pre-K numbers and using that, because that then for them to become equal, the districts have to have similar ratios of triple E students to the regular the total PK population, do you understand me?
Yeah.
And you said it would affect the MAU, but the shifting of the superintendent's salary.
I'm not, that's not with respect to the MAU. Because they don't have students at this level, it's just elementary.
No, but, but it would affect the assessment for that part of, the other part of your proposal of shifting some of the cost of the superintendent's salary would impact MAU, right?
Yes, a little bit, yes. I, I don't think it's very much of a shift, but I, I have not calculated it this year and I gave a possible way of doing it, which, but I think it's, it's just a, not a very large of issue.
I suspect for some people, I don't, this might come down to dollars in sense, like, how much does this impact you, was, so.
It, it would always come down to dollars in sense, when you're paying it, yeah. But in terms of the way I want to present it, it's, 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 the principle of it is that we don't receive these services, we can't, because we're a non-operating district. And therefore, it's the argument that I've made, it seems fairly clear to me that that the oversight, except for a function that superintendent provides provides it for those services, but the services all go to other districts. Then there is no oversight function for our district in this area, because we don't receive it.
So what I, I wanted to ask Renee, that's right, what what would be the process to figure out the assessment, two different ways to present to the board in a timely manner that before the budget has to be settled, we would need a meeting early in January of this board again, if it was the board's desire. And we present, here's what your assessments look like, with, you know, what, what is the wish of the board?
Now that the budget's set, it's just, I just need direction as to how I'm, how everybody would agree on it being presented, so right now any, anything that is kind of overarching every district, so administration, finance.
Which does it, yeah.
Gets allocated out proportionately by equalized pupil, so we take equalized pupils from every district and then just whatever. And then just whatever proportion that is, we take the cost and allocate that out. Um for, I don't know, focus on my email, but then for example, um like with English language learning and curriculum, those costs only get assessed to the operating districts because they're actually running schools. So we would take North Bennington and we would take Sandgate, equalized pupils out of that. And then the proportions change for the other operating districts and then we allocate the money out that way. Um special education and our um local pairs. Um we directly assess those to each of the districts because we track the costs separately. So there's no true like assessment and shift there.
Right.
Um early ed and so I should say pre-K and early essential education have been handled differently. So it's been the, the two-year average of ADM of your, um your triple E students, your pre-K students. But then also factored in was K to three. And I don't know, I don't know the rationale as to why it was that way, if it was to create more stability. So there was less fluctuation from year to year.
Uh but, and that would work for the pre-K population. But it, it uh pretty much does a, a number on the triple E distribution. Because uh you know, I've been noticing these numbers for quite some time. They're pretty, really high for, for our costs. And I don't think that's, you know, I've, I've just made my argument, that's a principled argument, not an argument on the money exactly. Although it's, it's hurting, hurting me is my district as far as I'm concerned. But that's not my argument. I, my argument's based on principle that this is something that should be basically distributed on an equal basis for the number of pupils. Because that's, that's the way the budget's constructed and it makes sense.
So I think what Jim was just saying was so people can see it and that's on this.
No, I, they, they definitely have to see it. I, but I think if we can agree in principle that these things ought to be addressed, then I'm willing to sit down with Renee and we can come up with a better proposal. We can study the data. Uh particularly on the, the, the pre-K, the triple E stuff. Uh you know, we could do some, just some simple projections. Give, get all the data we've had for the number of years and see if we can even this out so that there isn't such a huge jump and disparity in terms of our costs. Because our, any, you know, like Sandgate's costs too. I don't know what those are, but um they would fall into this because they're in the same situation. They're small. And uh SVU E S D is larger and uh well Arlington is sort of from but they're not, they're not huge, but they're, they're larger than we are.
So I guess I would just need direction as to how you would like to see it. Like are, do you want me to continue to have everything else the same? Are we going to look at the administration portion or is it just going to be um the triple E or is there a shift in pre-K? I can do it, I just.
Well, I'd like to see the, you know, if I could talk to you about doing uh like the calculation for the uh the first proposal, the superintendent's services. I, I have an idea how that looks. I don't know the numbers because I haven't looked at that. But uh a couple of years ago when I worked on this, it, you know, it looked like four or five thousand dollars at most. I don't know what it is now because the cost of going out.
Do you have an idea what the early childhood shift would be if, if you looked at those numbers?
Well, let me, uh it's in, it's in here, actually. Uh it, just going back to twenty, twenty twenty-one. So the shift um the shift uh in, if you go back, uh well go to notes, the note to point eight, eight. So if you prepare the, your pupil spending on two-year average by both methods, the current method at that point in time, which was the two-year average, gave us an a- an average spending of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen per pupil. If by the triple E method, we would have a spending of twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three per pupil. And the S V U E S D spending was twelve thousand seventy per pupil. So wha- what kind of shift is that? Um it's a it's from four, four students at uh six thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars shift.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to deal with the fact, not so much, it's the process of the method. The method, the method we're seeing has a flaw in it. Is basically what it begin at and the saying that, okay, if we don't, we need to uh we, we got some people in pre-K and all this all thrown in together and they shouldn't be to get.
And, and plus K three.
Okay, they shouldn't be there. That, that's what I'm trying to get on and I'm trying to find out if that's the case. You know what I'm saying? Well, you know, we want to do things that's, heck, we're not, the district's not going to lose any money to do anything out there along that line. We just want to have a fair method of managing.
Yes.
The key is.
A O E's method does not determine what we use. I mean, it doesn't have to. It has been used. But we, we have the power to come to an agreement on a new method that gives us more equity. And that's, that's what I'm arguing for.
Sounds like, uh go ahead. So if I can make a recommendation, because I've been down this road with a few other boards for open meeting uh violations. We didn't have this on the agenda, you know, so it's all right to have a discussion.
Yeah.
But I don't think we should vote any action on it. We should have a separate meeting early enough. And then with it on, so it's warned on the agenda in case anyone else wants to come to discuss it.
Yep.
So we could do a, a special meeting early enough. Do you have enough parameters to? I guess, I guess what the board could that, what's the wish of the board? Do you want the Director of Finance Operations to run the numbers of what the assessments look like in two different ways?
And I was going to ask, can we make at least that authorization?
Yes, because you, you're giving a directive to the superintendent to have or uh the Director of Finance Operations conducts some work. It's, it's not a binding voter and you know, you're just giving me a directive to do it.
Well, I, I think that's what we really need to do is look at the language and, and, and how we have, how it's currently being applied. And say if we move that out and then make it so that it's it appear it's more equitable to, to treat it this way. And this is what it's going to look like, is what we're saying out here. And if you don't mind doing that, I, I think that's what we need to see because the bottom line is we need to be doing things equitable.
That would have been Jim's recommendation would have been mine with the addition that Ray can get together maybe once.
Yep.
Just to be able to look at what's happening.
Yeah.
Not to take up a half of her day for and I don't think we need to vote on that.
Okay, well, just, I think, I think I have a feeling from the committee, so we'll go through that.
Oh, sorry, Fran.
It's a, a question to make its simplicity for me. Let's say if, if the money is a hundred thousand dollars that they don't have to pay. For the sake of argument, I'm just throwing this out. So all the other districts would pay that difference that would be uh split up between all the other districts.
Which, which part of this? You're talking about the whole thing? Between the two parts?
Yeah.
Yes, well, I'm pretty sure it's not going to be a hundred.
Well, no, no, I know. I just threw that out there as, as an example.
Yeah, that, you, you know, the assessment business is unfortunately a zero-sum game. You got a, a set of totals for each district and it's got to equal this figure, which is the total.
Somebody's going to pay it, whether it's somebody.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
And I, I said that uh in my letter, my.
And so that's what we really need to look at at a different time with that one agenda, I think.
Oh, so I would just like.
I really think we should, you know, I don't know what Sandgate's particular problems are in this. But they could be, they could have the same issues depending on how their assessments have been handled with uh B D S U.
Can I make a comment, please? Who, I know it.
I'm sorry, who's Matt?
This is Matthew, yep. Um I just, I'm, I'm kind of perplexed because the I know that we've had personal discussions with Jim on this for at least three years. And I, and I know for a fact that in the last uh, the last time this didn't get anywhere. Um there were promises that this would, this would be addressed uh in a public meeting where there would be action taken one way or the other. And Ray has done an incredible amount of work to provide to all of you um you know, an analysis. Likely imperfect analysis of the situation that he sees as being inequitable. And I had hoped that uh the agenda that came out would have included this and it did not. And then I urged Ray to see if the, if it could be um put on the agenda. Uh as can be at a meeting and I thought I saw that happening, but I could have missed that. Uh in terms su- such that there could be action taken um. You know, he said this, he, he sent out uh really an incredible analysis. Um and he's right, it's not about the money. We might be talking about five, ten thousand dollars. It, it's about, it's about equity and it's about, you know, the right thing to do. It's not a hundred thousand dollars um. But I get the sense this is all getting kicked down the road. And then I saw Renee's um email this afternoon. And I don't even know what that clarification was about, but I is this getting swept under the carpet again? We're going into year four? Because no one wants to deal with it? Or, or can you assure me that, that this year um a meeting with Ray and Renee and Jim and whoever else will result in?
Proposal?
Proposal, but then, but one would that proposably um uh voted on. When's your next meeting?
We, we'd have to have a meeting in
Yeah, we gotta have.
January, so there's time to for the board to vote on it so that uh local district budgets can be assembled. Do I have that right?
So that would have to be for like uh a week from now, two weeks from now, what?
Probably within a couple of weeks. We've been meeting every couple of weeks here. That wouldn't be unusual.
We're not going to have any other meetings before the first of January, until, until after January third.
Right. It would have to be after that, so.
It being a change and, and to be considered, we're saying we needed to make sure we put it out and let all of the, if the S U members see it and come back with the, with the vote, knowing how it's going to actually affect them. But the, the bottom line is equity. And we're saying, okay, this is what needs to happen because this is the way it should be happening. But you need to know what this is gonna, how it's going to affect you when it happens.
So let's get there, we'll set another meeting and.
It's useful to have an example of what, you know, what's going to be the impact that's going to be there.
Oh, so for clarification, just because I need to know this, you're going to have a meeting uh sometime after the third of January in which on the agenda will be a actionable vote taken on this. Right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, 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 that's okay. If, if we can schedule it uh. You know, I, I have a, I scheduled our board meeting for the fifth. But uh I, it, I don't expect that to re- really be a budget meeting because I don't think there's going to be material ready then. But uh we could have it at any time that week as far as I'm concerned. If uh
Ray, I'm not, I'm not concerned about our meeting. I'm concerned about.
No, no, I, I'm talking about the, the S U could have a meeting anytime that week. And before our second meeting in, on the twelfth.
I can't commit to that week yet until, because you got to consider how little time is left between now and that week. And I don't know how much, you know, we're putting on Renee while she's doing everyone else's budgets.
Yeah.
To then do what, I, I don't know how much work that is for you to calculate two different um methods of assessment. And I'm going to let you not answer that here in the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm going to let you take some time to think what that is.
Yes.
So I just want to say we want it to be just as early as possible too because we can't set the other budgets. But I want to make sure we have the work done right. So it very well could be that first week, but you know, maybe possibly the, the, you, I know you've scheduled the fifth. I did the Zoom link for it today, so.
Thank you.
Um maybe, and that's at six thirty, maybe we could meet before your meeting.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that gives you enough time by next Wednesday. And I'm not asking you to answer me that right now. I want you to take thought to think about that.
I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, uh anything to get it done.
Okay. Let's move on to item four, the consent agenda, which includes minutes, uh warrants. We have a motion from Leon, second from Fran.
Yep.
That is their discussion. Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. The consent agenda is approved. We have two policies. Five, one, four, five, uh condom availability, which has been renamed to health barrier methods availability. We're asked to warn that. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Fran, second by Leon, discussion.
No.
No?
I just wanted to.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Uh fifty-one, forty-five is warned. The second policy is five, one, eight, five, anaphylaxis. Um we're asking for a motion to warn.
I'll move.
Second. Um discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Fifty-one, eighty-five, anaphylaxis is warned. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. In your packet, you'll see the student enrollment per district. And I just want to point out, I want Celeste was here. I want to see, I don't see her now. But I want to thank you for pointing out to me, one of the things that has slid through uh as we do this transition with Arlington and Sandgate, that their numbers are not on this report. So uh we'll make sure that we, you know, this is a, a template that's we've been using for years with the tech department pulling that down. So uh we'll work with them to make sure that for next month, we start including on our monthly attendance report. Um just want to remind everyone that uh I'm putting a we're on a winter shutdown. Tomorrow is the last day of operation uh for our schools in S U. Students go home tomorrow and all staff will be up and, and not return until January third. Uh I, I can't thank our staff enough for what um they've been enduring for what are we at, twenty-two months of this song right now, COVID? So I hope everyone takes this time to um to rest and be ready for uh what comes after the start of the year. So um just wanted to remind everyone of that, to, if you do email, you may not get a response. Uh there are, we do have emergency protocols in place of, in a true emergency, uh key people can be reached. Uh last week at the Union Elementary Board meeting, we had a presentation um on our COVID recovery and particularly the use of S R funds for COVID recovery. We, we know that we're seeing the impact of um COVID in our classrooms, particularly We, we know that we're seeing the impact of um COVID in our classrooms, particularly. With some of our most youngest students, um and. So, we put a presentation together, Union Elementary Boards are. This is part one of a three-part uh presentation, we also do this to the MAU, with the MAU Board when they meet again. Uh. Tonight, we're gonna focus on social, emotional learning, mental health and well-being. And what's uh services and systems we're putting in place to, to deal with that in our schools. And wanna remind you that the two other, in this, in this you can find all on our website too, about under our ESSR recovery. What we're doing with that, um. It's in uh engagement and truancy will be the second part of this uh report and then academic achievement will be the third. So you'll see uh at our next regular scheduled meeting, um engagement and truancy and then following meeting. Uh, academic achievement, so I've asked Assistant Superintendent Laura Madro to put this presentation together and she is here. With Jess Ordway, would you like to introduce Jess? Yeah, Laura, thank you.
So uh we also wanna introduce you to some of our, our staff that are supporting um each pillar of recovery, so uh Jessa Ordway is the SBSU. Uh, social, emotional and behavior coach, she's funded through Title IV. Um, she supports uh our whole district and has, uh, she was, um, just to give you perspective in a few minutes. Um, she was one of our first staff, um, we funded through a, a grant to support social, emotional learning for students. Um, and Jessa is able to so go in and support teachers in their classroom setting. Uh, to help them um problem solve how to support uh different uh behaviors or social, emotional needs. Um, that she's seen, uh, so I've hi Jessa, so if you can say hi Jessa. And she'll kind of jump in and, and help as we go along, um, and Dr. Abbott is here, who is very much a part of this work. Especially through the vein of social, emotional learning and behavior, um, my co-chair of recovery is Melissa Senical. Um, our director of curriculum instruction and assessment and Bill Basic is here, I'm the uh Assistant Superintendent. Um, as well, and uh he is part of the recovery team and helped to put pieces of this uh presentation together. So uh I'm going to share my screen and I'm gonna uh walk you through a couple of uh key points we wanted to share with you. So just give me a minute while I make sure I. It's going to work, yes, there it is, now I want, I need to make it bigger so everybody can see. Is that okay or a little?
Yes, we're, we're sounding like an elementary class.
That's my talk, right? So, um, we wanna start with our acronym dictionary at the front end of this. So some of the um terminology you'll hear us use, ESSR stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. MTSS stands for our multi-tiered systems of support. CIP um stands for Continuous Improvement Plan. And PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, so. Um, we're trying to be super careful of our, our edgespeak. Uh, so I wanna start by reminding you, prior to the pandemic, every school was required. Uh, to have a multi-tiered systems of support. And that is a balanced approach between academics. Um, behavior and social, emotional learning, so we really wanna provide a well-rounded opportunity. Um, for our students in every school in our district is required to have a plan to address that with. What are we gonna provide for all students? Some kids need some and more. And some kids need and more that's particularly specialized, we also have students that need enrichment opportunities. Each school also is required to have a continuous improvement plan. So when we look at data, we wanna make sure that the data that we're looking at is driving how we revise our system. And as we come out of, um, we're still in it, the pandemic. We are slowly um re-engaging with our data systems, we just wanna do it slowly to be respectful. Because we wanna be respectful of this period of time that our students have been through. So the reason we're starting with social, emotional learning and health and well-being is because that's the foundation. And we've asked our schools to, to really, and the state has asked us and given us permission to really focus. On the well-being of our students so that they can um and are able to be prepared to ready to learn. So, I um have up, um, I wanna show you, um, so recovery is uh kind of. Um, now, it's very much a part of our multi-tiered systems of support and our continuous improvement plans because. We went through a pandemic, our, our students went through a pandemic and we want to be responsive and we know. Um, that it's going to take many, many years to recover from this period of time. So part of what we're gonna share with you is, um, and that you can always find is we were required last spring to create a recovery plan. A many-year recovery plan to address um what we're seeing with our students. So as I stopped sharing just for a moment, so I can get the next link ready for you. I wanna show you on our website. Here it comes, so when you go to the SBSU website. You can go right to the SBSU ESSR Grants and Recovery Plan. This gives you the summary of, you can always reflect back on the summary of where, where the team has um. Uh, what the work of the recovery team, um, and, and how plans have been put in place. So as a reminder, we were required to have a recovery team last year with stakeholders from every school, um, every. Every area representing um counselors to classroom teachers to community members. Um, we met uh multiple times to prepare a required plan for the state of Vermont. And so you can see, you can link in with these tabs here on the right to review the process and the plan. Including the, we, we did not have a, a, a lot of data last year, but we were able to pull together some. Um, to make decisions, and then when you click on the planning and implementation. Tab, this part is important because this is the part that's constantly updated. Um, you can find the SBSU's recovery plan that was approved by the state. And you can see our, our, where our recommendations were for um spending money. Um, these are also ideas that came from, we surveyed all of our families, all of our staff, we had meetings with community members. Um, and what you see in blue now is this plan is taken down and as we start to implement our action steps. We're making notations in blue so you can track, um, track what's happening. You'll also notice there's a feedback form button. You can always submit feedback, this button is checked weekly, so ideas, anything is, we're, we're always, we're always looking for that. So with that foundation, um, now, uh, we wanna give you a little snippet through the lens of um social, emotional. Learning, um, how we started to, and it's again, started because this is a multi-year plan. How we have. Second. Um, started to, uh. There we go. Do, okay, coming back, there we go. So I'm, it's through the lens of behavior and social, emotional learning, um, we do have. A little bigger, yes, I can do that. How's that? Good, thank you. Uh, even in the lens of behavior and social, emotional learning, we have standards. That we teach to, all of the standards that we teach to in the state of Vermont um are approved by. Um, come from the Agency of Education in the State Board of Education, so. The Vermont Transferable Skills, we, that's what every school in Vermont teaches to in this vein, and, and there are the standards. There is a tab on our website that I've highlighted where you can go to learn more. So we have the, we have standards that we teach to, um, we have, we collect data, so in our district. Um, we, every, every, um. Every grade span has a, a, a method for collecting some social, emotional data that they monitor. A lot of the data we're collecting right now um is, is very diagnostic. We do have one piece that we can give you that, that we thought would be informational to the, to the SBSU Board because it. Cut, it cuts across all of ten sites or ten schools. Um, so I'm also the homeless liaison, I do intakes um for our district. Uh, last year at this period of um between August uh of last year and June seventh. I did eighteen homeless intakes pre-K to elementary district-wide and eight at the secondary level. And this year, and I wanna mention that, um, in this next piece of data that um Arlington has included. It's a, a, a small statistical number, um, but I wanna point out that between August and December tenth. I've done twenty-six pre-K elementary intakes and I've done eighteen at the secondary level. So it's just, it's just a, 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 just a little teeny snippet of data for you or a point of, of reference to. Um, some of the things that, that we're seeing. So then we use data, um, and Jess is a great part of coaching, part of what Jessa can do is she can. Coach building leadership teams or individual teachers and how to use the data they're seeing. Um, to prepare for next steps, and so then we have to look at its instruction, so how are we providing? What's the instruction that every child is gonna receive through the lens of behavior and social, emotional learning? So we wanted to highlight. Um, we wanna highlight uh just a, a few, a few key um resources that we use. So um behavior, um, you, we reference positive behavior intervention supports. Um, which could be, um, also you'll hear that PBIS term. Um, for social, emotional learning at the primary level, um, we use second step, um, we were able to use Title IV money. To support um accessing resources. Um, zones of regulation, um, I'm gonna defer to Jessa, Jessa, you wanna give a little snippet, what zones of regulation?
Sure, so zones of regulation is kind of a secondary resource uh for, for teachers in schools to use. Um, it's really geared towards h- helping students um gain skills in emotional and sensory regulation. Uh, which in turn leads to kind of increased, uh, you know, self-control and problem-solving abilities. Which then directly impacts um behavior and uh, you know, social, social skills and relationships. Um, and the nice thing is, is that it provides um a common language for, for staff. Uh, in buildings to use when kind of uh working with students as well, um. And it also allows us to not only provide these skills for everyone, but um the nice thing is, is it can be individualized to uh. To certain students uh based upon their needs, um, so we can really focus in on what those regulation strategies are and what works for, for students, so. Um, so it's kind of a nice, well-rounded um supplementary curriculum to use to support students.
Um, and then I've listed conscious discipline uh here and uh it's a trauma-responsive, social, emotional. Um, learning uh resource that, that can be used um as well. Um, I know that this is what Fisher um is currently um using, and again, this is something that's funded through Title IV grant money. Um, at, for health and wellness, again, there are state, everybody in the state teaches to the same standards. Uh, we have a local health curriculum, we have a wonderful group of health, passionate health teachers that are doing. Um, creating incredible opportunities um in partnership with their physical education peers. Um, we currently, not only are they giving good first instruction, but then they're offering enrichment activities like Fitness Fest that's currently happening. Which is a virtual opportunity for families and children um to learn about healthy habits that will run through the winter break. Um, and you'll see similarities in the grade span between four through five. When we get to the middle school and high school level, um, you'll, although we are using also um. Embracing restorative practices also at the elementary level, um, there's uh more targeted um. Uh, use at the middle school and then at the high school level. So again, when we talk about every child is gonna really, um, is going to receive good first instruction. And then our job is to look at, at data that we collect to say, and right now, we're trying to do that. Um, as quickly as we can, especially in the vein of social, emotional learning, so we can help to provide support. The next question is, you have to train teachers, you have to be able to provide professional learning. In, in the, in this, in the evidence-based strategies and the resources we have, so, and they need to be linked to your goals. So if you look at our recovery plan, you should see, trauma was a huge request that came out of the recovery plan. And here you see, we're offering graduate-level courses and trauma instruction. Um, we offer trauma one on an annual basis and trauma two on a biannual basis. Uh, we have a contracted provider and we have, um, Castleton is wonderful and being able to support credits for people that want them. Um, and then there is an SBSU trauma cohort with representation from our district that gets to meet. With our contract provider, Jessa also sits on that group to provide um consistency. Um, restorative practices um is another practice we're fostering, we're using grant, we're using ESSR money. To train teachers, so Jessa, we've run how many circling trainings for teachers?
Uh, we've offered, uh, there was two opportunities last year, um, and we've offered one and there's already another one scheduled for after. For after the break.
Good, and so these are all, uh, new, it's gonna take time as people get more confident. So we, they can get the training and then Jess is available to provide follow-up coaching, which coaching is what we know. Um, actually leads to a lot of success. Um, we have used our title money to try to increase the amount of um. Uh, crisis intervention trainers or CPI trainers in our district. Um, Kate, you wanna add anything about that?
Uh, in our SBSU, we have one trauma or one uh CPI trainer per building this year, which is a, a great uh benefit.
And that is, and that is new this year. Uh, again, there was, you saw the resource con, the, the conscious discipline and again, professional learning, that goes along with that. And then one of the interesting ones this year is our music teachers, part of recovery, our music teachers brainstormed and knew of a, a, a resource. That we might have some children that really respond to music to deal with the trauma or the anxiety they're dealing as a return. So we were able to use our title money to contract with a trauma um drumming professional. And last June, he provided a training which a group of professionals went through and it was really interesting. Some schools had a music teacher and a counselor go through the training together. And then now, in this moment, what we're doing is we're providing a residency in buildings um that are able to, to um implement this. So Shasbury just did it, Shasbury had the instructor come and he ran classes. And then the professionals that were in the training could witness to see how it would work. And so in Shasbury, the plan is classes can have a trauma drumming lesson. But then the counselor who's providing a service to a child can do an individual lesson, which is super cool. So that's kind of what that tiered piece looks like, so you can kind of get a sense, professional learning-wise in this vein. Um, how this works, and then, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do this big, but then we wanted to give you a snippet because then. We wanted you to see the different roles. Um, that uh are different, if I go back and say, Jessa was one of the first people, grant-funded people that we. Were able to um access and um it's just grown, I might have to go down just a size and I apologize for this. I hope this is gonna work, okay. So I'm gonna pause just on, just so you'll get the lay of the land, so at, at Bennington Elementary School in Molly Stark, for example. You'll see that there is now a clinician, a, a one or two school counselors. A nurse is a critical person as part of the behavior, social, emotional team. Um, a social worker, um, which the two schools share. Um, behavior uh interventionist, um. Kate, you wanna give the, or Jessa, either one of you, or actually, Jessa, why don't you do the behavior interventionist, what would a behavior interventionist do?
Sure, so they um are kind of the in-building supports uh in regards to, to behavior. So everything from kind of universal practices um and helping kind of coach through that to um really working more on. Um, you know, those students that might need extra, so working with staff to kind of put some interventions and supports into place. Um, for, for those students, um, and I think they also kind of can support staff with implementing. And training on those things as well.
Thanks, and Kate, I will let you take on the, the next one.
The board-certified behavior analyst, the BCBA's.
Yes.
Last year, we had one BCBA district-wide, and what a BCBA is, it's basically a clinical-level behaviorist. That can deal with some of the most complex types of behavioral um challenges, they can conduct functional behavioral assessments and then help draft. Um, help teams with drafting behavior plans and then teaching and training um different members of school teams. To ru- to manage those behavior plans with fidelity, collect data, and report back out on the data to say, how's it working? So we have had a, um, we hired one, our first B C B A last year contracted because we are, they are very hard to find. And that um was so successful and she was so um busy. And, and went to all the schools in our district that this year through our Esther funding, we have four. Um, one is a local hire, one is a contractor, and the two are um Estha grant-funded, but. These are one of the supports that we would want to consider looking at, and I've built into the um special ed budget to start to. Um, make a longer-term commitment to because once Esther goes away, we don't want to have. Um, no access to behaviorists because this is the difference. Access to a behaviorist in the moment when, when you're a teacher struggling with challenging behavior. Makes the difference between having a child, a young child that might face a suspension or a young child that might be able to be safe and maintained in the classroom. So they're very valuable.
Thank you, Kate. You'll also notice an art therapist, Tom, that was a request out of Esther, again, it was a brainstorm, an innovative brainstorm of. Um, just looking at another way to provide services and again, an Esther-funded uh position. Um, can support individual therapy uh sessions with the child and also do group therapy in partnership and collaboration, kind of what. Jackie was talking before, can go in and teach with a teacher, um, provide, provide services. And then you'll notice too, we're attempting some pilots. Um, if you imagine some of our youngest children um at the pre-K K level. We're in a school setting for almost a year and a half. So I just want you to pause and think about that for a minute, and so we've, we've noticed, we learned quickly that we needed uh more social-emotional supports to support our youngest children, and so. We're contracting with community partners. Um, we, we spend a lot of time, more than we ever have, meeting with um United Counseling Service. Our hospital, because they are also seeing the same needs, and so our plan is to work together. And to share, you know, try to, to share our resources, and so these are just some examples. If I continue down now, you're going to see similar roles, here's Monument, oops, sorry about that. Here's Monument and uh Panel, you'll see similar um uh roles. I'm going to keep moving down because at the elementary level, you'll see, you'll notice lots of similarities. Um, Woodford has access to district-level resources. And they, they call when they need help and we send, and we send supports as needed. Um, the middle school and high school, um, you're going to, it's a, it's a. It's a developmentally different level, but you're going to notice, um, we've tried to um make sure that there are appropriate resources. Um. There as well, um, they also, you'll see um an increase of cau- uh guidance counselor services. Um, at the secondary level because career planning also comes into play and we're trying to start to refocus on there, but again, you can see how we're using. Our grant funds, you'll notice family engagement specialists, that was a huge conversation out of the recovery team. Um, how can we get uh, continue to engage families that have disengaged from school? And so the family engagement specialists are linked closely with their counselors, but they're able to go out and work with families. So they go in teams of two and meet with families uh to, how can I help you get support to help your child do their homework? How can I connect you um with uh? The guidance counselor, how can I help you get to school in the morning, your child? So the family engagement specialists um have been. Super helpful and a resource for counselors that can actually go during the school day and really meet um families where they're at. Um, and so if I keep moving down, you'll also see that Fisher um in Arlington, you can see um, get a sense of their roles, they also. Um, as part of recovery, have a social worker now in each building. Um, as a, as, that is part of the, our Esther Grant. Um. And uh, and uh work around um equity and school culture. And then the additional supports listed at the bottom, um, there's a few new. Uh, areas in here, one um is our S V S U Health and Wellness Coach. When we re-looked at all the responses from all the families last year, um, in the spring, one thing they said is we want to see movement back. We want to see movement with our families, we want to see movement, and we know the science behind the links between movement and learning. Um, I personally was super pleased about that, um, and uh. Our physical education teachers were super excited as well, and so um, and there, and the state has also said. You must support the staff that support the students, that's also part of our trauma work, please take care of the people that are taking care of the children. And so uh this particular uh person, again, a role we never thought we'd ever need, so she's, part of her time is spent. Um, creating wellness activities uh to take care of staff, and then she also can coach in the classroom with teachers. Um, to increase movement into the educational um setting. Um, and then the equity district level equity coordinator and our CPI facilitator. And so again, if I, I wrap this back up for you, the goal of this was, the three pillars of recovery. Are social, emotional, health and well-being. Engagement, intruency, which we'll talk about next time. And academic achievement, which should align with the release of um data that the state collected last year. And we just want to continue to give you an update, we know that our recovery, just as, as well as every other district, um. Everywhere educationally is going to take time. But we're super pleased to be surrounded, and again, Jessa, thank you for being here tonight and helping out, um, so they could meet you. Um, we're, we're, we're slowly baby-stepping and building a foundation and we're happy with, we're on the road.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Kate and Jess, and to Melissa who wasn't here with us today, but I know she's been a real critical part in this, in our principles and.
Yes.
So many other members of our staff, but. What I want to repeat that what Laura said. This is not. A quick recovery.
That's right.
This is. It's going to take years for what the impact of uh. Being out of school uh for so long for some of our, particularly for our younger learners, I was having a discussion with Laura this morning about it. Uh. A kindergarten student that I know that is now in the first grade who um. Actually, my grandchild, who I've seen. Um. When I think of what their experiences and I project it to what all our students. I had that, you know, basically um. He's learning now as a first grader how to. Um. Adapt to be in a classroom, to be in a setting and not, you know, joining for a partial day and not going. You know, going five days a week versus going two days a week and uh. So I, it, we see it in our classrooms, I've seen it personally, um, but it's, it's, it's going to take time. We'll put some tremendous resources in place, but the need is great. And uh, we may have to, you know, continue to shift and do more. Um. There is a safety committee with the. With both associations, it was tied to teachers' negotiations, those, remember that we, pleasure that we set those um. Set up those committees, we continue to meet with them, we met again today. They will be reporting out, those committees will report out by May. Um. And that could impact future negotiations going forward about. What Laura said, you know, we really take heart, we, we need to um take care of those who take care of our students. Because it's, it's not just our students that are impacted and. Our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our office staff, everyone, our families have all been impacted by this, so. Uh, thank you. Turn us on a work, luckily we have uh Esther funds to uh, to help address this. But I repeat what Kate said, we have to build some capacity. Uh, going forward for when these funds uh. Um, expire and, you know, make some critical decisions for. You know, there, there's support for recovery and then there's some, and then there's support uh that needs to be continued to.
Jim, can I just ask one, one question, this is Scott, um. I've, I've now had the opportunity to see this twice, and I think after the last one, I try and read, I try and read the local newspaper, um. And I'm not sure I've seen much. In the paper. To let people who may not have kids in the school system or may not pay. Close attention to what's going on with, with the local school system, to make them aware of what's, of what's actually happening and what. What these educators are, are needing to do on a daily basis, and it certainly helps. When budget conversations come around, you know, I. Um, and people are like, why is it, why is, why is it always more money, why is it so expensive, and this is, there's real answers in here as to why. Um, and is there, is, is there a possibility of a? Three-part series in the banner that does exactly what's being done here, is it, is it something that should be thought about as a? So the S U can control the narrative, is it's?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, and. We, it could all start with, if you saw our newsletter on Friday, this was also. The topic of our newsletter, so um, that could be a starting point, so uh, we'll uh take that up with Katie West, our public information. Coordinator and um. You possibly, you know, we can't control with the banner rights, but we certainly, as you could say, we can uh, they were here earlier in the meeting, but they're not here now. Um. But continue that, and it could even be, you know. We've offered to do interviews before with key staff members to make uh people aware of um. What is going on in our schools, so.
I think that's great, because there's news here.
We will pursue that.
You also?
Yeah.
Um. Unless any board members have questions. Are there any questions from board?
So, I, I think a follow-up would be the. Planning for continuation of these things over time, because a lot of this is Esther funding. And as uh Jim pointed out earlier in the meeting, that. That's going to go away and those people will go away unless we find a way to. Increase capacity, as you say. That means we'll have to incorporate them in the local budget.
Or shift priorities into it.
Yep. I, I. Appreciate that this. Has the potential for a lot of help to kids. And adults and uh with the community because it's a focus. And uh, I think that's important.
Our community partners have never been more important or critical in our mission, um. So, and we have regularly scheduled meetings and. Communicate the people in this, in, in this meeting tonight with our, our community partners. Um, because we don't have the capacity by ourselves to deal with. Uh, all that we're, we're doing, so you know, the hospital and U C F and. Whoever else, yeah.
Yeah. U C F, did I say U C F? Isn't that a football?
No, but this is, this is what you really need to get out there to the people. And say, hey, you know, so everybody can see that, this is what we're talking about, that the, we went through a tumultuous time with COVID and still going through things, and people need to know that there's. A lot of efforts being made to try to keep bringing everybody back on track and not only the kids, them too.
When you, when you look, for, for me, the most telling graphic is when you look at the resources that are listed for each individual school. Positions that if you were in a, if you went to school, even really not that long ago, you. What is that mission, what, what, what is that resource in that school building? Yeah, today, that's what I mean by this tremendous amount of services in the school. And uh, um, that. To Leon's point, the public might not be aware that that even exists in schools today. Right.
Thank you.
Becoming part of the normal life.
Yeah. Uh, I look forward to schedule for the next uh meeting to discuss assessments. Is there any other issues to go up for the board tonight?
Just want to thank the board for your support on the budget and on uh the lease agreement. Yeah, appreciate that, thank you for your voice.
N F Y I's include the budget status report uh to uh policies that were updated for administrative. Administrative regulations and student enrollment.
Yep.
And is there a motion to?
For what?
Second. Uh, motion by Leon, second by Fran, all of them favor?
Aye.
Close.
Hey. Good night everyone. Happy holidays. Yep.